February 13th, 2018. This is a voting meeting of the City of Prescott Council. And I would like to ask Mayor Pro Tem, do you have some introductions?
Well, I would like to recognize Joe Baines. Is Joe still here? There he is. Joe is a finalist for our Man of the Year for the City of Prescott. And you are our Man of the Year, so congratulations.
Yeah.
Nice to see so many people in the audience. Glad to have you with us. I was on the morning report this morning and said, "Everybody come out." They did. Thank you, Mayor.
When Mayor Pro Tem speaks, people listen. I like that. It's good. All right, thank you for that. We're going to have an invocation today by Reverend Dave Graff with Prescott Life Church. And then please remain standing for the pledge by Councilwoman Scholl.
All right, thank you for having me here. It's great to be with these wonderful leaders and our honorable mayor and all you folk with your vision. Let's pray. Jesus, thank you for bringing us all together. We pray for our city. We pray for these projects and these thoughts that are coming out today. May you guide us, give us wisdom in your wonderful name. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's do a roll call, please, Maureen.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Orr.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. In terms of announcements, just real briefly to remind everyone, we do have a public comment card that you can fill out. We ask you fill that out for each item that you might want to speak on and get that to the deputy city clerk. And she will get that up here, so we make sure that you get your time at the podium. We do have a three-minute limit. We normally have a fancy light that's not working today, I hear. So anyways, a three-minute limit per person, please fill those cards out for public comment. All right, presentations.
Item A, Mayor's Commission on Veterans Initiatives.
Well, I'm very excited about this new ad hoc committee, Mayor's Commission on Veterans Initiatives. And we have a great team of people that we've assembled. And I'd like to ask Stan and Michelle and John to come up. And I'd like to introduce them and then share a little bit about what we're going to do. This is Stan Galagaski and Michelle Stacy Schroeder and John Markham. And they'll be on this commission as well as Pat Kirkendahl, who could not be here today. So on the campaign trail, I found many different things on the campaign trail, but one of those, yeah. I found out that in our community, 10% of our population are veterans. And this is a significant number in our community. It's larger than most municipalities. And I think it's a real asset in our community. And so when I reflected on that, I thought, you know, we need to do a better job to make sure that we are a veteran-friendly city. Secondly, I would say that we have some amazing veterans organizations that are doing amazing work in our city, helping veterans. And those groups, I really appreciate and was pleased to learn about all those different veteran groups that we have, helping our veterans. And then finally, I would say the most important thing is our citizens are very veteran-friendly and they really want to support veterans. They appreciate what veterans have done, the support and the sacrifice that veterans have given so that we can have our freedom and be here today. And so I think that's our greatest asset in our city, is our citizens really appreciate what veterans have done for us. So with that all said, I knew that we needed to make sure that we were very purposeful and that we were focused on veterans' issues and that we make sure that we're a very veteran-friendly city. And so I'm very pleased to announce this commission. And this commission will strive to help make the narrative of our veteran community one of positivity, even where our veterans may struggle with things like homelessness, abuse, suicide, and health care. We will seek out the success stories that our veteran service organizations create every day. And by providing this leadership and partnering with veteran and civil leaders in the community, we will create new economic opportunities for current and future veterans, as well as those living in Prescott presently serving on active duty, guard, and reserve. I'm also pleased to say that our city is very veteran-friendly. We take care of our veterans. We allow them time. I was just talking to Joe, and I know that we have someone serving right now from the police department. We make sure that we hold those jobs for those people when they come back from their tours of duty and that we are a very veteran-friendly organization in terms of our hiring practices. So with this commission, I'm very excited to see what direction they go. But I'm excited to hold up our veterans in our community, make sure that we're a veteran-friendly community, and that we create opportunities for employment for our veterans. So with that said, I'd like to ask our city clerk to administer an oath.
Please hold up your right hand and repeat after me. I.
Aye.
State your name.
State Galagaski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Arizona.
Of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And defend them.
And defend them.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of the Mayor's Commission.
Of the Mayor's Commission.
On Veterans Initiatives.
On Veterans Initiatives.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So I do affirm.
So I do affirm.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And if you would please step back and to see Cindy, and she'll have you sign your oath.
Real quick, I also want to mention that Councilman Good will be a part of the commission as well as a council liaison. And I'd like to ask John Markham, he'll be the chair, to say a few things before you guys take off.
I'll be quick. First of all, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is very important to us. As the wars in Iraq and Afghanistan have wound down, the public does tend to forget that we have an enormous number of soldiers, airmen, Marines, and Coast Guard, everybody deployed around the world. So their safety is certainly not gotten better. And those veterans will be returning to our hometowns like Prescott. And to have a commission like this, to look forward to economic opportunities for them, to make sure that systems of care are in place, is tremendous. And we'd like to thank you. Extend our gratitude. And also to keep in mind that we still have the obligation to our veterans of past wars in service. So that's key, and I'm really excited. Express my gratitude also to the council. And we look forward to serving all of the community.
Item B is Project Andrew.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Prior to me offering an introduction on the Project Andrew, I wanted to take a moment to update yourselves on a few things that are happening in regards to the Wildland Urban Interface, specifically with the Arizona Wildland Interface and Incident Management Academy taking place March 10th through the 16th out at the Embry-Riddle University Campus. Some of this year's metrics kind of include, we have 815 students that are registered for courses to take place out of the college over their spring break there. We have roughly about a total room count of 2,500 across the Prescott region. That's how many room nights will be occupied. 141 instructors are assigned to that opportunity with a total class count of 51 classes. So Tony Shokin, his program after 16 years has really got it dialed in. Secondary to that is each of you are invited as part of the VIP Day on March 15th at 7:30 out at the campus, if you're so inclined. In the aftermath of the Granite Mountain Hot Shot tragedy, a number of efforts targeting a vast array of topics has unfolded in the form of foundations based off the philanthropy of many of the local and non-local folks. The most notable ones I'm familiar with include, but are not limited to, in no particular order, the Granite Mountain Hot Shot Crew Memorial Partnership, Eric Marsh Foundation, Wildland Firefighter Guardian Institute, Granite Mountain Interagency Hot Shot Crew Learning and Tribute Center efforts, the Granite Mountain Hot Shot Education Foundation, and most recently, and currently unveiling, the Healing Haven Foundation. With that, the latter of these is undertaken, some real special effort, in Project Andrew. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Jen and Tom Ashcraft to come forward and present about Project Andrew.
Wow, this is my first time here. Thank you so much for having us. Thank you for all you do first. Thank you for all the incoming council people, new to the council. We are very excited because for the last two years, we have been working really, really hard. I see that there's some slides up there, and I'm sure, I'm not sure if you can see them, but for the last two years, we have been working really hard on creating defensible space and becoming firewise, clearing seven acres that we live in. So let me rewind. A few years ago, I was teaching fire safety classes at the town square to the public during the Powik Firewise Expo. And I learned of a new incentive program that was available to people like us that live on seven acres in the forest. And is a special program through the NRCS, which stands for the National Resource Conservation Service. Ooh, that's a mouthful. So we applied, and we have been working with numerous agencies since then. It's been a pleasure to really work with them and also with the City of Prescott resources. So thank you. In 2009, Bob and Patty Simpson, which are here today, and you may address questions about his property, if you like, a little later, he built a fire suppression pond. It holds about half a million gallons of water. It is actually a great resource to the white spark community, not just to us. We have probably about 19 acres where residents actually live. So we decided to extend this incentive program to them. And we actually went around and just asked the neighbors if they were interested in becoming firewise and keeping us all safer. And yes, they were on board from the minute we spoke to them. Since then, Tom and I have become the firewise chairpersons of our community called Healing Haven. And we actually found out that in 2009, when Bob and Patty Simpson built this fire suppression pond, it was because of the Indian Fire in 2002, which burned, of course, you know, over 1,300 acres of the Prescott Forest. It cost millions to fight. And it actually has become even our evacuation zone if Plan A and B fail, actually. We can actually survive in this pond. So all the neighbors know that, all the residents know that. It is a beautiful place to live, as you can see. We have herds of deer that graze on grasses. We are taking a holistic approach to the health of our forests. And so we want to become firewise, and we want to do a thinning. And we are working with these agencies to accomplish that. We want to open up the space a little better and do the thinning as far as the square feet of a lot of these trees unfortunately are too close to each other. And the trees that are close to the ancient trees that are really, really healthy are actually sucking out the good nutrition of the big, strong trees. And we want to be able to protect those first. We protect the strong trees that are healthy, not get rid of them. So we have been working for the last two years with this dire project that is in our hearts and becoming firewise. We have worked with Powik, the firewise.org, Bob Betts, and now Dr. Michael Orr, the Prescott National Forest as well. All the agencies have been really a nice pleasure to work with. Let's see. So basically, we know that a fire will happen. And in a dire emergency, it can spread really quickly. The fire suppression pond will help slow it down, and it will actually give our firefighters a chance to fight any fire in that area. The most important thing that is, is going to reduce the loss of life, especially keep our firefighters safer. So thank you so much for having us, and thank you for your support.
As Jen and Tom have alluded to, that's just one of the many efforts being undertaken in our community in regards to firewise, but I thought it was a showcase event. Coincidentally, there's 19 acres that are involved. Coincidentally, Andrew and the crew at the time, a few years ago, assisted with the development of the pond. Right now, they're looking to partner, and I believe it's probably an April start date, to continue the thinning out in that area. And what is really key strategically is that's the southwest of town, which presents the greatest risk should we have a wildfire develop in the interface. So I commend you all and all the foundations and efforts that have come in the aftermath of the Granite Mountain tragedy. Thank you.
Councilman Sishka?
Yes, I have a question for you, Chief. Thank you for your presentation. How many pines per acre do we have now?
I'd be really guessing. I haven't counted them recently, not to be sarcastic, but ideally, you want about 100, I believe, per acreage. And some of ours are upwards of probably 70% more than what they're supposed to have. So a lot of that thinning. Probably the biggest misconception is creating defensible space and being firewise does not mean clear-cutting vegetation. It means managed vegetation.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Thanks, Jen and Tom, for being here. Appreciate that. All right, let's move on.
Item C, U2, Assisted Technology for Vision and Hearing Loss.
Good afternoon, Mayor Mangarelli and City Council. I'm Martha Baden, shorter than the last person here. I'm Public Services Manager at the library here, and I appreciate this opportunity to talk to you about the U2 Initiative here at the library, at Prescott Public Library. This is a grant-funded initiative. I think most of us have someone who's close to us who has a hearing or vision loss. It might be a father, or an aunt, or a neighbor. And it's not just us. According to the National Institute of Health, approximately 1 in 3 people in this country over between the ages of 65 and 74 have a hearing loss. Age-related vision loss also rises dramatically after the age of 65. And in our city, 30% of the residents are over the age of 65, which means that nearly 4,000 residents experience a vision or hearing loss. And this is just the figure for those over 65. These residents are literate, educated citizens who want to stay involved in the cultural, social, and civic life of our community, but his ability to participate might be hampered by vision or hearing loss. The good news is that with the rise of mobile technology, mobile assistive technology, that can change. The level of engagement for these individuals can change. So how does the library fit into all of this? The mission of the public library is to provide equitable access to information and educational opportunities to all residents. Last year, the library was awarded a Library Services and Technology Act grant to provide innovative technology and training that will address the needs of residents, tax-paying citizens who have a vision or hearing loss and who might not be able to fully access community resources. As part of this project today, beginning today, library volunteers will be on hand at each city council meeting to offer assistive technology like these listen devices. And if you haven't tried one, I'd really encourage you to do it. It's amazing how sharp and clear, and you can control the volume. It's individualized. As well as iPads that'll have the city council agenda on them so that persons who have low vision can either listen to it with text-to-voice or pinch it and make it large text, large print. These volunteers have been trained not just in these assistive devices, but also in council meeting protocol. We hope that their presence will offer all residents a warm greeting, assistive technology, and information about meetings. And city council meetings are just the beginning of the U2 project. Through the grant, the library also offers residents who can benefit from assistive technology, can check out iPads, and they're loaded with accessibility features, apps with captioning and text-to-voice features, personalized training from volunteers on these iPads and apps, portable listening devices like these at all library programs, library service desks with technology to facilitate communication. And one of the coolest of those is a captioning app so that if you speak with iPad near, the captioning appears below on a big screen. You can correct what it doesn't get quite right here, but it's been a real boon to us at the desk. Screen readers on all public computers in the library, so no longer is there just one JAWS station for people with vision loss. Now, any public computer has NVDA screen reader. Lamps and magnifying lenses throughout the library. The U2 project was also designed to reach beyond the library walls, introducing assistive technology at places where residents want and need to be, like city council meetings, restaurants, and educational events. To this end, our partners include the Police Department in Prescott for better communication with citizens who have hearing or vision loss, Ollie, Osher Lifelong Learning Institute at Yavapai College, and Delgado Azul. These partners have agreed to be part of the first year of this project, really a demonstration of what is possible with this new technology. The U2 project is supported by, and I have to take a deep breath here, I have to say this, the Arizona State Library Archives and Public Records, a division of the Secretary of State with federal funds from the Institute of Museum and Library Services. But here's the good part, additional funding is provided through an IBM grant that was secured by former IBM employee and library volunteer Harry Vedvik. I want to spend a minute to thank the exceptional City of Prescott staff who assisted with the implementation of this project. City Manager Michael Lamar, Community Outreach Manager John Heine, City Clerk Maureen Scott, and ADA Coordinator Angie Wine-Miller for their support, Special Projects Coordinator Tyler Goodman, who made space for us here at City Hall and really welcomed volunteers and trained them on protocol, Deputy Police Chief Amy Bonney for embracing the idea and implementing the use of iPads to facilitate communication with residents, and particularly the City IT Department and Mike Normandin, who created a plan for the implementation of this technology. The support and talent of city staff that has been part of the U2 project will directly benefit Prescottonians. And the U2 project has reaffirmed something else for me, and that is the recognition that we have an absolutely amazing bank of knowledgeable, kind, and altruistic community members who are willing to share their time and expertise. This project would not be possible without the volunteering spirit of the six U2 volunteers and the Prescott Computer Society. So library staff and volunteers would be honored to give you a tour of U2 resources at your convenience, and I'll be happy to answer questions from you. You have my cards whenever you're ready.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for having me.
Questions or comments from the council?
Just a comment, Martha. Thank you so much for steering this and to all of the staff. You're right, we have a great city staff, and it's wonderful to see this be implemented. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to consent agenda. Is there anything that you'd like to pull, any from the consent?
Yes, I'd like to pull, find out which one. Item D, please.
Okay, item D. Anything? D, yep. Anything else pulled on the consent? Okay.
We can include nine as well, or?
Let's just, yeah, let's just start with eight, this section first. So just pull D. Looking for a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I spoke to Joe Baines at our employee service dinner the other night and told him that I would like to pull this item in order to kind of highlight it for everyone. The, we should be the item, I guess.
We should take a motion on the other items and then go into that.
Let's do that. Let's take a motion minus item D, and then we'll get to discussion. But thank you.
I make a motion, Mayor, to approve items A through F and exclude item D.
Second.
Motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, thank you. So let's get to item D here, and this is in regard to the mountain biking event, Whiskey Offroad Mountain Bike Event by Epic Ride.
Exactly. The Epic Rides, it's actually an item for where we're amending the contract. But I wanted to bring it forward because the Epic Ride partnership that we have with the city and Epic Ride, which is the off-road mountain bike, is a wonderful partnership. I spoke on the radio this morning with the amount of influence that this particular event has given to our city. We are known nationally, internationally because of this event. I believe that the trail system that we have now has been really lifted up by this event. It's such a great partnership, and it's $30,000 from the city. And that particular $30,000 is from bed tax. And the purpose of that bed tax is to bring in tourism. And I don't believe that we have events other than, you know, the big events at our city are the Christmas lighting, acorn night, rodeo, and I will tell you, I think the Whiskey Offroad is right there with these. So we are blessed to have this event, and I appreciate the work that Joe has done with Todd to kind of work through some contract issues on that and how your customer service to them is helping. It's just an important event. I serve on the Tourism Advisory Committee, and this is an event that they certainly want to keep in our city because it puts heads in beds, and it does it kind of in a season that is off, an off-season a little bit. And people not only come to this event, they come weeks before, and they ride on those trails because they want to get ready, because they want to win. So Joe, thank you for your work on this. So Mayor, I'm certainly not objecting, I just wanted to bring it forward and talk about the positive side of it.
Very good. Thank you for those comments. You know, I will say to Joe, again, thank you, but also to the council, 16 years ago, this race is 16 years in the city, is that right, Joe?
I was wrong on the memo, it's 15.
Okay, 15 years. So I appreciate the foresight the council had 15 years ago to put this money forward when really there was nothing. Epic Rides was really getting started. This was the inaugural ride 15 years ago. And I think there was a lot of foresight that happened with that council 15 years ago to step up and invite Epic Rides here to do this kind of race because it has given us national, if not worldwide, exposure. So we are grateful to have it. I agree. Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you very much. I, too, had asked that this item be pulled from the agenda, consent agenda. Very rarely do we have an opportunity to talk to the public about why we've done things and what we've done. And very similar to Councilwoman Orr, this has been a very positive thing in the City of Prescott. And Councilman Blair and I were both here 15 years ago when we took this leap of faith and an opportunity to build another signature event in the City of Prescott. And while normally, we would take a position- And while normally we would take a position of not wanting to invest on a private enterprise type of opportunity, this particular partnership, if you call it a partnership, is a $30,000 investment with multiple hundreds of thousand-dollar return in the city with regards to tax collections, et cetera. So, you know, anytime as a business person, I'm a business person, anytime you can get a 10 to 1 return on your money, you're kind of dumb if you don't do it, and you're kind of dumb if you don't continue it. So, you know, I thank Joe Baines, I thank my fellow council who were here at the time for having the vision. You know, we market ourselves as a tourism destination point and something that comes from the outside in and brings thousands of people into the city, and they leave their money here. We use that money to provide basic services. Sales tax is for that purpose. Bed tax can be used for that purpose, but it's very specific with parks and recs development and tourism promotion, and this fits both. So, I happen to think this is good to continue this process the way it was designed to do, and it was a winner when we thought of it, and it's a winner today, and it's been one since its inception.
Thank you, Councilman Lamerson, thank you. Councilman Good?
Thank you, Mayor. My feeling is that the original intention to subsidize and support and get this program off the ground and running successfully was a legitimate use of our taxpayer dollars, especially in the bed tax, which is producing tourism and results for filling up our beds and our restaurants, et cetera. But I don't think there was an intention to have a permanent subsidy for a profit-making organization such as this. It's become quite successful. It's part of a group of events, similar events, that are part of a circuit now, and I think at some point it's appropriate for our taxpayer dollars to be weaned from this subsidy and let it stand on its own. I think it's quite successful, it will continue to be successful, and by reallocating some of these dollars to other events, similar events, we can expand our tourism capabilities without continuing to subsidize this. So, I think it's about time to wean these tax dollars from Epic Ride and let it continue to be successful and grow with its own management. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councilman Blair?
That's why there are seven of us. We don't all see the same light through the same crack, so to speak. I just want to share, real quick, in the business that I do, I had the opportunity last Friday to do some window coveries in a gentleman's house, and I always ask the customer, "Why are you here?" Because it helps my marketing. And he said, "I'm here because," you're not going to believe it, 15 years ago I came here from Ohio to ride in a bicycle race called the Whiskey Offroad." And he said, "And since that time, my wife and I have been back to Prescott 15 different times, 15 different years, at least 15 times each year, to stay in hotels, and we fell in love with Prescott. We spent a lot of money in Prescott. Now, we live in Prescott, my wife's a nurse, and we spend sales tax on all the cars we buy, everything we buy. So, what you did, as far as bringing this group into town, has provided sales tax and economic opportunity for the last 15 years. And the 15 and the $30,000 we give them to help seed this event is exactly what the bed tax dollars were intended to do, so I will support it 100%."
Joe, would you like to add something?
Yeah, I'd just like to take a little walk down memory lane. I did a little research so that I could, since a lot of this preceded my time here and a lot of other people's, just to kind of go back and try to figure out what the initial thoughts were. So, I created a little timeline. In 2003, the inaugural race came, and it was 200 riders. The city at the time said, "Well, we could support the in-kind services that it would require for that, being street closures and trash and those things." So, it was approved administratively. Then, in 2004, there was an agreement that the city kicked in $1,750 for advertising and also the in-kind services for those trash and street closures and whatnot, not to exceed $5,000. So, then you can see in 2005, it already, two years into the event, it had gone up almost doubled to 350 riders. 2007, it was up to 535 riders. And remember, these are about four to one, so every participant, every participant brings about four people with them. 2009, it went up to 800 riders. And then, in 2010, and this was done with purpose, the powers that be at the time, including council, decided that this could be one of our signature events, a lot like the rodeo, which we support every year. And so, they upped the ante there to a $20,000 cash contribution, along with in-kind services of up to $10,000. And at the same time, they purposely expanded it to a three-day event, they added the concert and made it a three-day event and more of a community event. And then, you can see in 2011, it jumped up to 1,400 riders. 2012, up to 1,750 riders. Again, at that point, we looked at the contributions again and made some adjustments there. In 2013, we amended the contract for the first time, which just capped the in-kind services at 10,000, but allowed, I wrote that down wrong, it included those services, whatever they might was, but the city had the discretion on what would be provided, so I apologize for that. So, the event costs for fire, sanitation, street closures could exceed 10,000, but the city has control over it by deciding, you know, how much they would support that, if it's two cops or is it four cops. And then, in 2013, the city and the event promoter split the cost of an economic impact study that was completed by ASU, which showed that the event itself was a $4.4 million economic impact to the city. And then, the growth continued. 2014, 1,979 riders. 2015, it went down a little bit because of the weather. And then, we get to today, what the item in front of you, and I just wanted to kind of talk about that a little bit, just really changes a couple, a couple little details in there. The contribution remains the same at $30,000, but it decouples 10,000 of that from the purse and leaves discretion for the event promoter to use those monies as he sees fit. He has, as Councilman Good pointed out, this is now four legs to this race. There's Carson City, there is Grand Junction, Colorado, and now there's Bentonville, Arkansas. So, this allows him to line up the purses so they match all the way through. It allows for the use of the Gray Sparks Activity Center for storage and receiving from March to May of every year, which makes sense. We have people there from 8 to 5 that can take a shipment in, and then they have a place where they can store it during the peak of their event and a little bit afterwards. And then, the last thing is just identifying a city liaison, which is me, to help facilitate with the planning. Well, it's me, but it's really the special event committee and Michelle Stacy Schroeder. But anyway, those are the things that are in front of you today, those three minor adjustments to the, to the contract.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions or comments for Joe?
Yeah, I still have a comment here, Mayor. The fact of the matter still remains, this is a private sector, public sector partnership, and was from the start. And the fact of the matter is, is because there's a private entity that actually owns the process, doesn't mean it's a bad process. What it means is this good for the city to participate in, to take ownership of a special event. And this special event, back 15 years ago, the thought process was to create something for the off-seasons, to be able to fill in for things that normally don't coincide with summer-type stuff. And as I thought I heard, $4.3 million impact is a huge impact to happen. I was here when it rained and snowed and was skittish, but the fact, that was the only time we've had an issue. Other than that, and while it's inconvenient for local people in a lot of ways, which it is, I mean, you have all these bicycles all over town using the streets, et cetera. Remember how the streets get paid for. Remember how the police and fire get paid for. It's through the generation of tax dollars. Those tax dollars are huge when you consider a $4.3 million impact on this community. That's what I have to say on this issue.
And that was 2013 numbers, right? We've seen that increase, I assume, since then?
Yeah, it's increased. I use the 2013 report because it was done by an independent study. We've had ones that Epic Ride has used the same formula that ASU used, but it's nearing $6 million now.
Which would be about a 200% increase on your money if you're looking at $30,000. Yeah. Okay, Councilman Siskel?
Thanks, Mayor. Joe, do all the other cities participate financially?
Councilman Siskel, yes, they do, and to a larger degree than we do from the anecdotal information that I've gotten.
Okay. And is it traditional in events like these that cities participate?
Well, again, it's about the return on the investment, and really, they're all done similarly, and that is that it's either a Chamber of Commerce that, you know, bed tax money, bed tax collections, and then city-supported services, so they're all really done pretty much the same. But we're, as far as contributions go, we're on the low end of that.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, and one thing I'd like to bring up again is the earned media that we get on this because they are international with talking about where these races are, and Prescott, Arizona, our hometown, is, they're in those ads. It's a lot of great earned media that we get that we don't pay for. So, it's really hard to even get your arms around what this does for our city.
Well, and that's part of the larger plan, is how do we tie that into outdoor recreation visitation in general? Doesn't just happen the weekend of the event, it happens throughout the year. The more recognition we get for that and the great trail system that Chris Hosking, you know, has the vision to build, also contributes in there, too. And, you know, hopefully, people plan their getaway in Prescott, Arizona, and come enjoy what we have.
I think they plan the retirement.
That happens, too?
Yep.
Sounds like it. And then, they're going to buy blinds from Councilman Blair.
There you go. And jewelry. And dog food.
All right, thanks for that. Councilman Good?
Yeah, I'd just like to clarify the fact that I certainly do support this great event. It's been terrific, it's growing, it's successful, and providing city services for the support of this event, I think, is appropriate. I just think that at a certain point, city taxpayers' dollars subsidizing an event that is so successful is, is at some point, no longer appropriate. So, that's my only objection to this. Thanks.
Very good. Councilman Scholl?
I would just like to add, not only does this event bring in a lot of money for our city, it's a very philanthropic event and raises a lot of money for our Prescott Unified School District Education Foundation, and they turn that money around and support our schools. So, that's really important on that front as well.
That's a good point.
That's a good, good point. I worked, worked there last, last year in that, so. All right, any other questions and comments?
Just one. You know, it bothers me, Phil, and I'm sorry, just when you make the comment, it's city taxpayer dollars, in essence, it really is not.
Bed tax.
It's bed tax dollars. It could be some, it's from the city, standing in a hotel, but not likely. So, it's dollars that are coming from outside of our community that support our economic venture.
Thanks for that clarification. Any other questions or comments? All right, I entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to accept consent agenda item number D.
Second.
Item D.
8D, okay. Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, let's move on to?
I voted no.
Oh.
I'd like to get this button fixed.
Passes 6-1.
6-1, okay. Thank you for that. All right, let's move on to item nine, ordinances.
Item A, adopt ordinance number 2018-1604, granting an ingress egress easement to Patrick and Diane Kelly and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said easement. Item B, adopt ordinance number 2018-1606, authorizing the granting of an ingress egress easement and a right-of-way easement to Arizona Public Service Company and Arizona Corporation and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said easements.
All right, anybody want to pull either one of these?
Yeah, I'd like to pull B for discussion.
Okay, 9B pull. Anybody else? We'll entertain a motion on 9A then.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance consent agenda item 9A.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, let's look at 9B. Councilman Good?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify this. It's a easement for APS to, in essence, relocate their current utilities from separating two backyard neighborhoods and moving that utility line out to Willow Lake Road. And I just want to make sure that everybody understands that APS acquired the property, deeded it to the city. They're asking now for an easement for that property for these utility poles and lines. So, even though it says there's no cost to the city, absolutely, there's no cost to the city, but there is a benefit to the city. Part of our franchise contract with APS requires them to pay us 2% of all their utility fees. So, we do get a benefit for this easement, and I'm sure the neighbors are going to be happy to get those poles out of their backyards, and overall, I'd just like to make that clarification. So, thank you.
Very good, thanks for that. Did you push your button? It's not showing up over here.
Yeah, we have trouble with that for some reason, don't we?
I'll let you talk anyway.
All right, thanks.
Councilman Lamerson?
Yeah, thank you. It seems like me and Good have difficulty with our buttons. No, I just want to publicly thank APS for working with the city and on behalf of the citizens of Prescott. I mean, you know, 2% is a lot of money, and the benefit to the citizens of the city is huge. So, thank you, APS.
Thank you for that. Yes, every time I turn around, APS is sponsoring something in our community, so thank you for all you do here in Prescott. Any, any other questions, comments? All right, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance consent agenda item 9B.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, moving on to item 10, liquor license agenda.
Mayor and council, the item is for a public hearing and consideration for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license for Prescott Station Bar and Grill located at 200 East Gurley Street. The application has been determined to be in compliance with the city requirements and being recommended for approval. The application fee has been paid, the application has been posted at the location for the required 20 days. No public comments have been received, and I believe the applicant is present to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Do we have any questions for the applicant? I don't see any at this point. Entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Mayor, I move to approve liquor license application number 12133693 for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license for Prescott Station Bar and Grill, location 200 East Gurley Street.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, regular agenda, item 11.
Item 11A, approval of appointments to the Pedestrian Bicycle and Traffic Advisory Committee. Mayor and council, this item before you is to appoint members to the Pedestrian Bicycle and Traffic Advisory Committee. The committee was originally an ad hoc committee and was established as a standing committee in November last year, adding traffic along with the pedestrian bicycle in order for the committee to review all three areas. The committee will provide input on city plans and projects that will impact pedestrian, bicycle, and traffic issues, and the committee plans to develop proposals for improving safety, accessibility, and connectivity throughout the city. The committee will make recommendations to the council on traffic-related safety issues.
All right, do we have a presentation? Are you helping us with this?
You know, I would love to do this. I would love to ask these folks to take a stand and come up here. We have Bill Finelli, Sandra Smith, Sandra, I don't know if Sandra's here, I don't see her, George Sheets, and Dave Farro, Paul Catan, and Jim Knott.
Mayor, just before we get to that, let's take a moment and thank the citizens for volunteering to help this city.
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
I've been the liaison, as this was an ad hoc committee. And Bill, you just did a great job in your leadership on this committee. But now we've expanded, you've did such a good job, we've now expanded it to include traffic. And that's gonna be really great for our city. So I thank you for joining us, and thank you for all that you've done. So congratulations. Are we gonna do the oath?
Yes. Thank you, George.
Let's do a motion first, and then we'll do an oath. Does that sound okay? I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to appoint Bill Finelli, Sandra Smith, Sandra Stuti, and George Sheets to the Pedestrian Bicycle and Traffic Advisory Committee to fill a three-year term from March 2018 through March 2021. And the appointment of David Farrow, Paul Catan, and Jim Knopf to fill a one-and-a-half-year term from March 2018 through September 2019.
Second.
Motion second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, thank you. And now we'll have Maureen do an oath.
Please hold up your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Sandra Smith.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support
That I will support.
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution and laws
And the Constitution and laws.
of the state of Arizona
Of the state of Arizona.
that I will bear true faith
That I will bear true faith.
and allegiance to the same
And allegiance to the same.
and defend them
And defend them.
against all enemies
Against all enemies.
foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic.
and that I will faithfully
And that I will faithfully.
and impartially
And impartially.
discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
of the office of
Of the office of.
of the pedestrian
Pedestrian.
bicycle
Bicycle.
traffic advisory committee. To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So I do affirm.
So I do affirm.
I U Ross. Congratulations.
Thank you.
If you're Good, to go back there and sign your oath.
All right, you sure to stay there?
Oh, goodness, these pictures.
That was too much. There we go.
Smile, George.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Congratulations, you guys. Thank you, Sandra.
All right, let's move on to Item 11B.
Adopt Resolution Number 2018-1629, authorizing the city of Prescott to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with town of Prescott Valley, the Central Arizona Fire and Medical Authority, the Groom Creek Fire District, the Walker Fire Protection Association, the Yavapai Community College District, and the Yavapai Prescott Indian Tribe for provision of consolidated dispatch services with the city serving as lead agency in the operation of such dispatch services, and authorizing the mayor and staff to take any and all steps necessary to accomplish the above.
All right, Deputy Chief?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council. What you have before you today is nothing new. You've seen this IGA many times before. A few changes, though, of note that are of importance is primarily, primarily just in the warding with Central Yavapai Fire District incorporating part of Chino Valley and forming CAFMA. We revised the IGA to reflect that as well. The IGA is still set to renew automatically every two years and just outlines the way that we bill the partners and their requirements of partners who subscribe to our services at PRCC.
Great. Mayor Protem?
I sat with this rowdy crew at the, at the dinner the other night, and what a great group over there. And the work they do is tremendous. I know you guys have put up a new system, and it's taken a lot of new training, and, and so thank you for all you do. I also was able to do some kudos about that this morning on the radio, so I appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you, Deputy Chief. We've come down a long way over the years together. And thank you for breaking down a lot of the barriers between the various communities that are now so close that we could enter into an intergovernmental agreement from a public safety perspective on behalf of nearly all of you, by counting if you really get to the personnel. Thank you for your work and effort in this regard.
Well, it definitely is a, a team effort, and, you know, I think PRCC is definitely a reflection of what can be accomplished when, you know, we put cooperation first and foremost. So it's a great organization, great people.
I remember when it said it couldn't be done. So a guy that's been here a long time, I'm glad to say, yes, it can be done, and thank you for doing what you do.
That's great partnership. Any other questions or comments? Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. Entertain a motion.
May I recommend move to adopt Resolution Number 2018-1629?
Second.
Motion in second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, move on to Item 11C.
Approval of Purchase for Two Marked Patrol Vehicles from Peoria Ford.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Fleet Services Division is requesting permission to purchase new, two new patrol vehicles to replace two existing police patrol vehicles. The two vehicles were reviewed by the Fleet Asset Review Board and approved for FY18 replacement. Fleet Service Division replaces aging vehicles used in patrol operations, which are at or approaching six years old or 100,000 miles, have reached the end of their useful life, and are becoming mechanically, mechanically unreliable for emergency operations. The police department utilizes patrol vehicles, I'm sorry, for daily law enforcement. These vehicles require regular maintenance to ensure reliability and maximum useful life. As they age, key components suffer failures, requiring repairs or replacements, and the repair and replacement costs escalate each year that the vehicle's in service. Asset 1120 is a 2005 Ford Explorer. It's 13 years old and has approximately 110,000 miles. And Asset 1237 is a 2007 Ford Expedition K-9 unit, which is 11 years old and has approximately 101,000 miles. Both assets will be considered for disposition at the next FARM meeting. And Fleet Services is utilizing the state of Arizona law enforcement contract in order to receive the best pricing available on law enforcement vehicles. And just so you're aware, pricing has been compared to local dealerships, and has been determined to be the most beneficial method for purchasing the assets. Funding of $120,000 is available, I'm sorry, $120,896.24 is available within the FY18 Vehicle Replacement Fund. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you very much. You're an asset too. You know, and I hate to think of our police or fire department out there with undependable vehicles.
Me too.
Yeah.
We hear about it if we don't.
Yeah, I know. So I'm just, just sharing it with you that for years, I've sat in this chair, and I support the police and fire departments. And what we need to do is make sure you have reliable equipment to do your job to keep this community safe.
Absolutely.
Thank you for that. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, entertain a motion. Thank you.
Mayor, I move to approve City Contract Number 2018-153.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, and now we'll move on to my favorite item, 11D Legislative Update with the dapper Tyler Goodman.
Well, thank you very much. It's my favorite item as well. Happy to be here. Since, since my last update a few weeks ago, there's been a lot of bills introduced that affect cities and towns. It's been a really busy year so far. And just you can see there, there's been 1,164 bills dropped total this year, which is quite a lot. This Friday, the 16th, is the deadline for bills to be heard in their chamber of origin, which means there's gonna be a lot done this week. So my next update will have a lot more updates as well.
Are you preparing us?
Yes, I am preparing you for future fun updates. For that first portion, the good bills, these are, these are deemed good by the League of Cities. As always, as we go through these, please give me your feedback if you have it, and we can carry that forward with Barry Arons as well as give that to the league. The first bill there, and I won't go through every single bill on these three pages, don't worry. I'll try to get through it pretty quickly. But this first one is a response to a bill that was passed a couple of years ago, SB 1487. And that is the one where it allows legislators to make claims against cities and towns who they believe are violating state law. It will go through the AG's office, and eventually, cities could lose their state shared revenue because of that. And this is in response to that. They can't get it completely repealed, the league that is. So what they're trying to do is, the major push for this bill is to make it so that the legislator making the claim has to be from the district in which the city and town resides. So that is a good one. There's been eight so far, and only one time has a legislator been from that district. So that would be a good change. The next one, SB 1382, has to do with vacation rentals and sales tax. It would require all online vacation rental sites to collect and remit sales tax, even the playing field a little bit. Moving down, 1499 has to do with the community facilities districts. And this is the resolution that we are seeking to the, to that confusing change that happened last year. It would allow the governing body of the, of the location to be the board of directors as well for CFDs. So that's a good change. SB 1407 is Senator Fan's, the hotshot budget appropriation. This will really be dealt with during the budget discussions. I don't think this bill will follow the normal track. But just as a reminder, she's asking for 7.8 million on behalf of our fire PSPRS trust. And then moving down, Representative Campbell's HCM 2005 is the flat-out requirement. He's gonna be hearing that in his committee that he chairs the Transportation Committee tomorrow, and Councilman Good will be there to testify on its behalf. And there's, there's really no problems with that one. I think it's gonna get through just fine. And finally, SB 1465, this is the sober living homes bill that Representative Campbell told us about, and Barry as well. What this would essentially do is allow the Department of Health Services to regulate sober living homes. And they would contract with a, an independent third-party national organization to implement the standards and enforce the standards. And reading through the bill, the legal, the legal office, as well as myself and Barry, it looks like it's largely in line with what we currently have already as far as standards and enforcement. So that may, you might consider that good, you might not. This is one I can certainly receive feedback on, if you have it, that I can take back.
Yes. Councilman Lamerson, do you have a comment?
Well, I was gonna ask Tyler, because you read these things a lot more thoroughly than some of us up here do. By cause and effect, what would be the consequence over what we already have here in the city with regards to what we've tried to accomplish in a home rule scenario for effect if this were to go through?
It looks to me to be essentially the same. I mean, I, getting down to the nitty-gritty, there might be a few things that are different. But overall, the enforcement is strong in requiring the house managers, as well as some of the other provisions that we wanted to see in the homes occurring. Discharge plans, all that kind of thing is in there.
So here again, for the state of Arizona, here in Prescott where it all began, we took a leadership role to begin with, and it looks as though the House is playing catch-up or the Senate's playing catch-up.
That is correct. And Representative Campbell actually wanted this version of a bill three years ago, but nobody was interested. And now that they've seen it for a few years, and Prescott took the lead and did something, okay, great, that works, let's do that. And now they're trying to...
Yeah, it's just here again, it's, it's a case of, just like we were a little earlier, and a little earlier, and a little... Prescott takes a leadership role in the state of Arizona almost every time we sit here. And it's just sometimes we don't market what we do very effectively. So I'm just sharing that with you.
Better late than never, right? To show up to the party.
It's better that we get it done. You're right.
Councilman Good?
Yeah, this can't be done, right? So I think it's working pretty well in our, our city. My concern is, who is this third party that's gonna have the enforcement authority? I, I have a big concern with that. This is an unknown third party. What their capabilities are, what their funding is, whether they have enough staff to actually do this as effectively as we are attempting to do it and, and doing it now. That's a big concern of mine.
Absolutely. And if I'm not mistaken, isn't it ASRA? John, do you remember if it was?
It, it, just to clarify, the, the, the legislation's gonna set some basic standards, some broad standards, just like we set in our ordinance, some of these broad standards. But we don't try to tell an operator how to actually operate day-to-day because we don't have the expertise. We say, you have to have an exit strategy. You have to have a policy about visitors. You have to have a, a policy about attending or being in recovery. You know, you have to be in an active recovery role. We don't sort of have, we don't set measurements. So that's what the legislation's gonna do. And then the national recovery industry is gonna sort of implement those standards. And I will tell you, our standards, we stole from those national... I mean, and I went online and, and drafted the ordinance. We looked at what other state organizations and national organizations and what their standards were. For, for instance, the idea for NARCAN came from one of those state standards. So, you know, that's where we looked at, you know, what, what are the good operators doing? And so, but, but the enforcement part is, the, the, the organization, that's the contractor's going to do the inspections, do the reviews, the, if there's a violation, the enforcement goes back to Department of Health Services to actually do the enforcement. So they're, the, the agency or the contractor's going to be sort of the investigator, if you will, if they find violations, the correction notices and the, any kind of enforcement, the pulling of the license if that becomes necessary. That's, that reverts back to the Department of Health Services. So, and the interesting thing about this, and Tyler points it out in his summary, is there's no preemption language. So the question is, we have an ordinance in place. We're the only city in the state that currently has an ordinance in place. I think there are a few other cities looking at it. But what does that mean for our ordinance? Are we preempted, or do we still have our ordinance? You know, I, I think even if we aren't preempted and this passes, it may, we may wanna look at repealing ours and, and letting the state regulate it because otherwise you have these sort of two sets of regulations that may conflict, and that could cause problems. But there's also the opportunity, by the way, and this is something we're also having Barry look into, is can... And, and Department of Health Services has this inherent power in, in its statute. It can contract by way of an IGA with the local government to do enforcement. So we may, we may wanna look at that, too, if this bill passes and becomes law, is we may wanna be an enforcement agency for the state law. If we get the report from the contractor that says this, this guy's in violation, we may, we, you know, it's up to you all. But we might want to look at being an enforcement arm just for the city of Prescott if there are violations here. So it's still, I suspect there probably will be some changes, refinements as it goes along to address those kinds of questions. But I, I agree with Tyler. I think the, what's being proposed is very, very similar to what we're doing. And in fact, I kinda suspect that they took our ordinance and said, well, let's just do this at a statewide level, tweaked it a little bit to make it sort of broader on some things. Because again, we don't, I will tell you, we don't have the expertise to really, you know, like a Department of Health Services that regulates behavioral health treatment centers. We don't have that expertise. I mean, and, and we aren't supposed to. We're a city. We really don't get into that business. So I think there are maybe some slight disadvantages, but I think we can overcome those if this bill in fact passes.
Doesn't state law by default preempt local?
Not, not unless it specifically says so.
Oh, really?
So it's a, again, it, it creates a potential tension because why should I be licensed? If I have to be licensed by the state, why should I be licensed by the city? And if, if, if there is a preemption type language that ultimately gets added in, then I think what we'll definitely wanna do is, is make sure that at least we have some sort of business licensing for... Because right now, we don't require the sober homes to get business licenses because they have their sober home license, just like our vacation rentals. So we'll have to sort of keep track on this and make sure that we make the necessary adjustments, depending what the bill ultimately, if it passes, what it looks like.
Well, when I was the co-chairman of the Sober Living Homes Committee here, we had DHS come in front of the committee. And at that time, they had two staffers that handled all of northern Arizona.
And, and, and you're right, and it was, they do their annual inspections of their licensed facilities. And then they also, on, on complaint, they'll come up and send, they'll send an investigator out. Yeah, so they'll definitely need some funding to be able to do this because, you know, there are literally thousands of recovery homes in the state. I don't know how that compares to, for instance, memory care-type facilities that are licensed. But there's a lot of licensed facilities in the state that are rather small. So it's gonna probably take some sort of funding. I think it's supposed to be self-supporting, though. The fees that they pay to the state are supposed to help fund the, the enforcement.
As long as we can maintain our, our current ordinance and, and maintain it and monitor it while this plays out.
Right. Oh, yeah. Without a doubt.
We should be in pretty good shape.
And again, we'll see what the... And again, we'll see what the ultimate bill looks like and if it passes and it takes, you know, and as you know, anything that passes takes effect about August timeframe. So we'll have a lot of time to make whatever adjustments we need to make within that timeframe.
Okay. Mayor Proton?
Yeah, I have some of the same concerns, Phil. And I was down, one of the legislative, you know, down at the, when they were doing, I think there were four sessions at the legislature. And the Department of Health Services, they didn't want to touch this. I don't know if you remember that particular session. My concern would be, we've made great progress in our city on this issue and that we are able to maintain that progress. And there aren't too many things I've seen gone to the state, that have gone to the state that have actually improved.
Right.
So I just think we need to be really careful.
And funding.
Yes, exactly. That's right. Because if it's not funded, the work won't be able to get done. And we've heard over and over that there's no revenue for things. So we just, I think we just need to really be cautious because the city of Prescott's done a great job on this and we want to stay there.
That's a good word.
My recommendation is to not oppose it, not necessarily support it, sort of take a wait and see and just keep an eye on it. And I know Barry's doing that. And it'll, like I said, it'll probably get amended or adjusted or refined based on some of the questions that we've raised.
Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you. Here again, Tyler expressed my appreciation to Representative Campbell for forwarding and working on this. But publicly, I want to thank John because John, you're the one that's helped us on this right from the get-go. It took two years, if I remember correctly, and we took two or three stabs at it, if I remember correctly. You're the one that did a lot of the dirty work, working with HUD and working with the Department of Justice. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Tyler, do you think there's a possibility in light of our unique circumstance that we've sort of taken the bull by the horns on this, that Senator McGee would consider if a community was interested in local control of this and enforcing at the local level some financial contributions to the city? Because otherwise, they're going to have to pay somebody as a third party. And under that scenario, we'd be getting something for something we're already doing.
Yeah.
Follow my logic?
As long as they don't include a preemption portion to the bill, I mean, we could always ask and...
I mean, it doesn't hurt to ask under the circumstances. If we're satisfied with the way we're handling the enforcement, if we could get some state assistance financially, we might as well request it.
It's a good idea.
I like the word reimbursement better than assistance. Yeah, reimbursement for doing their job. All right.
All right, you can continue to tell us how the legislature is helping us.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Going down the list, new bills of concern that I didn't talk about last time, the first one being House Bill 2501, it has to do with PTSD presumptions for public safety personnel. And there's quite a bit of things it does. Number one, it extends the time that a public safety personnel person can file a worker's compensation claim by changing the deadline to one year after their last counseling session. It also creates a presumption of PTSD for the public safety employee unless the employer can show a preponderance of evidence to the contrary. Number three, it prohibits the employer from requesting an independent medical exam. Four, it increases the number of visits from a minimum of 12 counseling sessions to 48. And it requires the employer to pay 100% of the employee's salary during the period of visits if the counselor says that that person is unfit for duty. So obviously, the League of Cities is working hard on this one. This is similar to the last year's with the cancer and heart presumption bills. Those both did pass. And these are always uphill battles, right? And it's not that we don't want to take care of our personnel, it's that we want to do so in a way that's financially affordable for cities and towns. Considering that Tier Three is now just barely getting into effect of PSPRS, I think we want to be able to just take a break from these types of things and let us get our feet under us a little bit more. That's certainly what I've been trying to express to the League. If you have any other feedback, let me know. A lot of cities and towns in the valley are pretty mute on this subject. They do deal with unions and labors like that. So...
This could have a huge financial impact over the long run.
It could.
Almost every public safety officer is going to be involved in some type of a traumatic incident that they could claim created a PTSD condition. And it's a presumed verification of that unless the city can show otherwise.
Which, how do you realistically do that?
It is impossible to disprove a psychological illness, particularly PTSD because it's so complicated. And then if you can't require an independent medical exam, there's, I mean, even if you could disprove it without an independent medical exam, you have no evidence to disprove it. So it's, to me, it's seriously flawed. I understand the rationale behind it and the reasoning behind it, as Councilman Good is referencing with traumatic experiences. But I think we're going to work hard on trying to adjust it so it's really much more fair. If it's going to go through, that it's definitely much more fair. And because right now, we do, through our workers' comp coverage, we do work with employees, whether they're public safety or not, who have maybe some work-related psychological or emotional issues. And we work with independent medical exams to provide the assistance and the treatment and whether it's paid time off or those kinds of things through workers' comp. But the fundamental function of workers' comp insurance is an independent medical exam to determine what the, exactly what the medical problem is. And without being able to do that, it's, you're just guessing. You don't want lawyers making medical...
No kidding. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, moving on, that bottom one, HB 2500 has to do with real estate signs. And in this bill, it would allow real estate signs to be in our right-of-way, the public right-of-way. We could not limit size, number, location, duration, except they have to take them down within seven days after it closing. I talked to Barry and asked him that he sign in as opposed in any level of discussion this has, and he's doing that. And then going down, Speaker Meznard, and thank you to our clerk, she made me aware of this yesterday, this was dropped late, probably the latest it could be. Speaker Meznard has dropped a bill for consolidated election dates. Once again, we hear about that. Last year, they had something similar. The House last year approved it, but it died in the Senate, came back during budget talks, it eventually didn't go where they wanted it to go, but it's coming up in a different way. This has to do with voter turnout. But essentially, they're targeting charter cities and they're saying, hey, we know that there is Supreme Court cases that support you in this, but go ahead and challenge us because we can, we can pass a bill and you'll have to challenge us.
Tyler, Councilman Siski had a question?
Yes.
I just had a comment on the real estate sign debacle. It's letting the camel's nose into the tent and who knows what's going to follow after real estate signs. And we dealt with that a year ago as far as, you know, what we were going to allow in public rights away. And so, you know, I don't even want to go there.
That's what cities are worried about, is that this will just open the floodgates. So, yeah, this is one that we're actively opposing.
Thanks.
At what point, John, in a short story or answer, do we start saying, you're messing with our charter when they're doing this stuff? I mean, if we didn't have a charter of the people of the city, these last two, the one that Meznard's dropping again with the elections, why do we have a city council if they want to run everything we're doing? It doesn't make sense.
The short answer is, generally speaking, there's two things that the charter, charter cities have local control over, and that's city elections and real estate transactions. Our sign ordinance is in our city code. It's a police powers kind of issue, so the state thinks it can change it. But it's not even the nose under the camel's, the camel under, whatever, you know, the tent thing. The problem is, is under the current case law, once you allow one content type of speech, real estate signs, you got to allow everything. So it is, the exception swallows the rule with that bill. And you're back to this right-of-way clutter that I think the council at the time said, no, we don't want, and the public too, we don't want the right-of-way clutter, we don't want signs in the right-of-way. And as you recall, the last election, the last council said, hey, let's put our land development code sign limitation on a hiatus. It's still on a hiatus, we have to come back and address that. And let's not enforce that and allow people to put whatever signs, political signs on their property, because you, I think the prior council thought what was ultimately adopted was too restrictive. So, and that's completely different, I think, than right-of-way signs. And so, yeah, it's, so anyway, I think Tyler and I had a conversation with Barry and I know a lot of other cities, flagstaff, that have similar ordinance as we do are strongly opposed to it. The big cities, if you go down the valley, there's no restrictions on right-of-way signs for the most part. So I don't, that's maybe why they're quiet on it, I don't know.
I think the scariest part for this to me is the no limitation on the size and the number. I mean, if you could put a sign of any size and any number of signs, you literally are creating a public safety risk at that point. You can't see anything.
Okay, moving on. Senate Bill 1392 and its companion bill has to do with sales tax of digital goods and services. And what they do is they distinguish pre-written software versus other digital goods like books, movies, music and all that. And they separate them and they say, if you download it from the internet onto your computer, it's taxable. If you do not, if you access it through the internet or through the cloud, it is not taxable. And it creates an exemption for at least eight of those transactions that have pretty much always been taxable by the Department of Revenue. And we're not sure of the impact of that yet. But I would imagine that it's, would be large for both cities, towns and the state as well. So we're going to keep an eye on that and have more information coming. The next one down is similar, local sales tax speculative builders. It's the elimination of the speculative builder classification for all new construction projects, both commercial and residential. And this would obviously have a big impact on cities and towns. Currently, cities can impose a 65% of the selling price tax of new construction on the seller. But this would provide that the developer, if they have in-place leases, any other intangible values, which nobody knows what that means, and that could include anything in order for them to bring the price, the taxable price down all the way to its lowest limit, which would be the amount that was reported, the taxable cost reported to the state. This would obviously have a huge impact as well. And talking with Lars, he's working with the League on getting some numbers locally of what that would look like for us. So we should have that perhaps by the next update. I can have that for you.
Didn't you say lobbyist?
Yeah.
It's also retroactive, which is another fun portion of it. Limits to $10,000 from each city and it best distributed among anyone who claims, who comes and claims. So, and finally, this is just getting less positive as we go, HB 2116, it has to do, essentially if a developer's liability on a project, if they received a permit from the city or town, there's eight years of liability for, after the completion of that project. And let me give you an example. So if a person is working on that project and after eight years, and there was a mesothelioma case involved with this, if that person files a lawsuit against the city or town, the developer would no longer be required to indemnify the city or town. And we would be liable for that person's disability or illness. And that would also have a huge impact, especially on small cities and towns. That could really, that case specifically was millions of dollars. And for a smaller city or town, that could sink them. So the League is totally aware of this one, working obviously very much against it, trying to bring it down so that it doesn't financially bankrupt, especially smaller cities and towns. So, and then my last page, I won't go through these, these are just, and you've probably seen them or read through them already, just from my previous update. I give you a little bit of updates on those things. But I am happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Any other questions or comments for Tyler?
I'm sorry, go ahead. No, go ahead.
Mayor Proton?
House Bill 2097, Livingston's?
Yes, that did make it through the House. It passed all the way through the House. I did not see it yet assigned to a Senate committee, but it will be.
Is this the one where they're requiring cities to say what their plan is?
Yes.
To pay?
Yeah, PSPRS.
So Barry is opposing that?
Yes.
Can you give me the rationale on that?
Well, that was from our previous update. The council told me that we do not want the state telling us what internal financial policy. So that's the basis on which we're...
Well, we're doing it anyway.
Exactly.
I mean, so...
The idea may not be bad, but it's the premise of taking local...
I agree with that. Okay, got it.
It'll pass.
So Tyler, anything at all on the horizon as far as trying to make PSPRS more sustainable?
Nothing this year.
Yeah, so that's very disappointing.
I think the idea is essentially Tier Three. You know, the legislation two years ago, that was the big, big chunk of a fix. And although we're seeing these presumption bills coming up, we're not seeing any other little bills to continue to tweak it and fix it. So nothing this year.
Okay. One of the things when we worked hard to get Proposition 443 passed was that we would try to keep some pressure and some heat on the legislators, legislators to, you know, keep this in the forefront, keep it on your horizon. And it feels like it's really fallen off. And so I think anything that we can do to make that happen, maybe we write a letter or, I think we just need to think about it because that was part of our, part of our deal, is that we will absolutely keep pressure on the legislators to get this done. So...
Yeah, PSPRS just recently released their consolidated financial report. And they produced a 11.85% return net of fees. But their funding went down by over a percent, which just shows you when you're that low, even when you have good returns, you can't invest your way out of the hole. So it's going to be a serious problem and it's going to continue to be. Tyler, I had one question. Wasn't Representative Campbell going to drop a bill on patient brokering? Did that ever happen?
Yes, he was. And in fact, I am not aware that he has. I'll certainly take a look. I'll let you know. I haven't seen one. That doesn't mean it just didn't get by me. So I'll take a look and make sure.
Other questions or comments for Tyler?
I just had a suggestion for Representative Livingston. How about a quid pro quo? We'll tell you our plan if you tell us your plan. For DPS, that would be nice.
There you go. I've actually wanted to ask that question of our legislators. Yeah, so all right, here's what, what are you doing? Nothing. So...
And I can certainly do that. I can ask Barry to ask that they put that in there, that it's not just cities and towns, but it's the state as well.
It's an excellent report, Tyler. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before we adjourn, I'd like to share a quote from our first president, George Washington. He said, "The harder the conflict, the greater the triumph." This meeting is adjourned.